We're in the call meeting order of course. Six, uh, first point of order is the intensive review, which includes the uh, US meetings and approval of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty three ready meetings. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Okay, first and the second, um, first mention of the technical question, I'm not sure if we still need to say that.
All right.
Good thing.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in favor, check, aye, have it, motion carries. Move down into public comments. Is there any public comment that you would? Like, I, as, I would acknowledge that this is now, we've had someone come to a committee meeting, and if we're meeting the same one, so we're loving the public. I would like to say I love the public participation, so. Any, any comment? Well, I will take that, just thank you for your, your, thank you for being here. Uh, any recommendations for the public?
No, sir.
All right, well then we'll go into division before it's.
Oh.
We're, we're missing, we're missing Carol, uh, uh.
Get Carol's line.
She's, she's. That's your, I was like, did she just go take a back and break? Did I do something?
No, it's happening even here.
Well, what, two weeks away.
All right, so, um, I'd like to tell you guys about a very cool request we had for information. Um, and that is for, uh, information on the Ryman family. Um, I don't know how many people know this, but, um, Cater has a very kind of unknown, but very, very cool, um, hometown guy. Name is Herbert Ryman, um, and he worked on, he actually worked for Disney as an animator, um, helped develop the concept arts for Disneyland and Disney World. Um, and also worked on The Wizard of Oz for MGM, um, the entire Emerald City background painting, that's all known. That's cool. Uh, Disney, he worked on Fantasia, Dumbo Bambi, and Three Caligatos. Um, he was friends with Emmett Kelly, if you know who that is, he's an old, like, one of the first really well-known clowns. Did all the major paintings of Emmett Kelly were all done by Herbert Ryman?
Could be obviously a clown, but I thought you were gonna say illustrator or cartoon. Okay, cool, that's classy.
No, yeah, no, actual clown.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, Disney did the world, and then the Ryman Institute in Los Angeles was founded in his memory by his sister. So this is a guy, we didn't actually know he existed, but that's pretty awesome. Um, so he obviously has been added to the collection in local history, but yeah, uh, somebody who is a former, or a, uh, somewhere in the line of the family came to us and said, hey, we're looking for information on, on Herbert and his mother Corabel, um, and his sister Lucille and Christine. Uh, Lucille was an actress, um, Corabel was a, uh, a teacher and became the Megan County, uh, superintendent of schools for sixteen years until like nineteen thirty-eight, so very cool family, very cool family. And, uh, their information has been added to our stuff, and the people who requested this were super thrilled with what we found and are taking that information to the Ryman Institute to share it with them, um, so that they have, we have, and then of course I gave them my card so they can pass on.
Did you say the institute was?
It's in Los Angeles.
So I assume that's where the family is located now?
Yes.
Okay, that was.
The family is mostly dead, so there aren't a lot of children or anything, so the Ryman Institute is basically what's left of the materials and whatnot. Um, so, yeah, so they will have, what, what we have in our archives will be at their archives, and maybe they'll share with us?
Maybe they'll adopt them here and bring them too.
Maybe, who knows? So, this family was thrilled, the, the, the family member that we talked to was thrilled with what we found.
Anything else?
That's it, okay, and now it's going on right now.
Email, picture.
Yeah.
Well, do you ever look over, say around this, if not, we, I could get out of here.
I'll list two lists.
At least you're gonna make some maps, too, or something like that, but.
I have to go do some maps, yes.
Some maps. Melissa.
So, um, I took vacation last week, so this week is a lot of catch-up, and I didn't actually get my report too written in time for you guys to see it, but I got all my usage stats pulled together today. And I'm here to report that we had a thirty-nine percent increase in electronic circulation from last January to this January. That is enormous, absolutely enormous. Now, if you remember, I had talked to a little bit about Hoopla and our little problem about spending about seventy-five hundred dollars a month, and it was costing us a lot, and so I had called Midwest Cape, and I was gonna put a cap, so we couldn't spend over eight thousand, and they made the recommendation that we take audiobooks and put a cap on the amount people could spend. So right now, you don't see anything that's above two dollars and ninety-nine cents. So you shouldn't miss it, you don't know that you can't have it, you just no longer see it. I'm aware of one person that has had it so far.
Unless you're, you're halfway through your book, and it's gone.
Sorry.
I want a book to disappear, too.
I'm sorry.
Whoa.
But I'm not.
It's expensive.
I'm not done yet. We decided not to do that for January, because we were halfway through January when we decided to do this, and we were on track to spend seven thousand, seventy-five hundred dollars. So we didn't wanna make anybody mad, and cut them off then, so we waited. But January came in at eight thousand nine hundred dollars. So I'll be talking to Midwest Cape and saying, hey, if you thought we were on track to spend less than eight thousand, and what we came out with eight nine hundred, how positive are we that going forward, that we can predict, make that projection for the year? Because I'm counting on them to help us keep it under ninety-six thousand.
Now, we used to, we used to see that you could only take out three audiobooks a month, now you can take out.
But during the pandemic, we, we, we increased that.
But we wanna go back to.
It's, I think it's hard, I think that's hard to do, uh, but, you know, it's not really the problem.
The majority of people are reading a little over four books a month. There are very few people that are.
She's more users.
Exactly. So even if we did put that some cap on, that would prevent a very few people from reading a lot, but we would still be spending this amount a month, because we have so many people using it.
So, I mean, this is something for us to, we've got to be here to work, work on this, but I think what we're gonna have to do is just find, find the money to meet the demand. That's, that's, I think, the, the, the best, because we're here, you know, we're here to fill that demand of our public, and they clearly want this, uh.
I've been doing audiobooks since Keka, with you guys, so.
So, I mean, that's something that we'll be talking about over the next few months, you know, uh, and figuring out a way to budget enough money for, for this, uh, for next year. But for this year, this is the best solution we have, is saying nothing, nothing over those, if you're gonna.
Two ninety-nine.
Two ninety-nine for audiobooks, but we are well aware that we can adjust that in the future, so we can lower that number, or we can work on the regular books.
And so, and just for the, it didn't, my book didn't just disappear, it, you get them for two weeks. Uh, I didn't finish it, I went to check it out again, you know, that was, that was.
So how often can you?
Mine must've run out of.
Switch it, like, if you say for this month, we'll leave it at two ninety-nine, then say if we get some patrons complaining, we move it up.
They're not gonna notice. They would notice if you said.
Why would I like say, like, people like Rick, who said, oh, I, I was gonna go back to, we get enough.
He only really noticed because he knows. If he didn't know it was.
Well, because I went to check it out again, and it said that title wasn't available.
Right.
Even if I didn't, uh, you know, something happened.
I'm just asking, how often can we go back in and slide the, the cap around this?
All the time.
Probably could as often as.
Often as we need to. Having said that, he did move the money in the material budget to accommodate the increase in use.
Okay.
So.
I love that.
That's all I have, I heard it's going to be a long.
Hmm. Uh, well, I, I was.
I have a great new one, but I won't be here. Oh, you have the other two.
Yeah, good. All right, all right, all right, well, I appreciate that. Absolutely. Um, Rick?
I'm just gonna say, do you have any questions?
Carol, do you think you have something to add?
What's that?
I just, Carol.
Uh, well, no, she didn't tell me what I'm gonna, I, I am gonna ask her to come to the PPPR next month and give us the full report on the I committee. Uh, I, I'm just, in the, in the interest of time, uh, what if I just answer any questions I might have, and say, like, very simple, assuming that a chance will work out.
I love you.
If long, if we're.
Any questions as it relates to CBI very important events? I thought it was. What's your favorite thing to accomplish? What are you most excited about this month?
From, from, well, this was, this, I, actually, I have the December and the January, I said a lot of brands, right, on there, so, uh, I think probably a thousand books before Keter. Uh, you know, we had our first kid reach that thousand books, uh, we've got a hundred eighty-nine kids. Uh, a hundred eighty-nine kids are old, uh, seventeen thousand five hundred forty-one books, and, and in town, you know, where we've, we've had national stories about our literacy rate, I think this is us doing our, our bit to help, you know.
I love it, I love the pictures on Instagram, I like everything.
Well, without being said, we will, uh, proceed forward, appreciate that, move down into reports of the Canadian versus the PPPR, our person, our policy, public place. Chair, we're there.
So, we met earlier this month, and we reviewed quite a few, um, different policies, just, we just thought that it was just time to look over these, um, and so the first one was the management personnel can book, so on page six, I think that was the only revision, um, and I can't remember what it was before.
We did have one small revision, uh, other than that, and that is, uh, on page four of fourteen, where it says, uh, at the very top, merit raises and decreases are discretionary, it did say, uh, it did refer to a formula that is no longer, uh, no longer in use, so we edited that, and as far as the highlights up on page six, uh, it used to be, so the, the Paying Leave For All Workers Act in Illinois, uh, says that, that employees have to begin earning time off, uh, immediately, from the, from the time they, they, they start working. So, so it used to be you had to wait six months before you got vacation leave. Uh, we could do this incrementally, uh, but there are, there are different rules about, um, uh, the management of the time off, if you do it incrementally. If we just hand it to them on their, on their hire date, and then on their anniversary date, like we do now, uh, we can say it's a use it or lose it. Use it by your anniversary date, we can keep our same rules, so administratively, it's a lot simpler. Uh, but it's, the, the changes are to get us in compliance with the Paying Leave For All Workers Act for, uh, Jordan Klein, our attorney.
Is there a motion to present the management personnel can book provision as is it? Is it first or second? First by Chair Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, in favor, Chair, aye, have it, motion carries.
And then next, we had the retention session plan, which essentially just means all of that, that happens in the library, if anything were to happen.
Yeah, it's just, it's called for to be, we, we adopted this a year ago, and, uh, the, the, the call for us to review it annually. Uh, I didn't recommend any changes, I did change the name of our attorney.
Because we have a new attorney. Conspicating, I didn't say the issue, and I need to see it where this jacket is, because I'm up there, but I would. Um, with that, with that being said, is there a motion to present?
I have a motion.
Is it first or second? So, first and, or second?
Or second.
Second, right, really, good for, uh, any discussion? Seeing none. Ask the, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The, aye, in favor, Chair, sorry, in favor, aye, have it, motion carries, I have signed.
And then the polls. The collection development policy, um, it was reviewed in September of twenty twenty-two, and so we stopped every couple, couple of years, it gets re-reviewed, um, there weren't any revisions to this.
No changes, certainly. Uh, it, it gets us in compliance with, uh, with Illinois, with also with the move law, uh, which is the, kind of the anti-book banning law, uh, this, our policy was already in line with it, but, uh, you know, we have to re-adopt it or revise it every two years.
Go, Alexi. Keep on running the street, especially if you have any place to do something.
I'm gonna look up.
You know, I suggest that we all look up our wonderful Sec- Secretary of State.
And State Library.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, they, they does a great service in the state of Illinois, so we, we appreciate that work. Uh, so with that being said, is there, is there a motion to present the collection?
I have a motion.
Oh, please, the first and a second. All right, it was a second, uh, first by Sophia, second by Chair, we're there, um, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Um, aye, in favor, Chair, aye, have it, motion carries.
And then, so the next, we had three marketing firms, um, present their marketing plan for the stage one of the strategic plan for the library, so we had plan and marketing out of champagne, Cast Concepts, which is located here downtown, and then DCC Marketing, uh, which we've used DCC in the past for other things, so we went ahead and, um, selected plan and marketing, and really, it was just because they offer kind of the full scope of what we really felt was needed for this stage one, um, they offer the customer support and a lot of training to, helping with, um, the marketing person at the library, so they kind of just overall what we needed, um, in this stage one, and they fit in the budget as well. So we kind of. Anything other?
Budgetary restrictions are becoming more and more, right, more, obviously, as we deal with more and more proceeding or cascading financial predicaments or obligations, how we're like to put that, obviously, we'll get to that a little bit later in the meeting. So yeah, recommendation, add, add to your R is to select plan and marketing of the three, uh, obviously, if there's anywhere special we would like to add to that, it should be the, the type of, so.
All three of them were great, it was just kind of plan and offered what we thought was best for this first stage.
I think a key part of that was the whole bringing the brand concept, I think we reiterated that, and, uh, I think we knew that the brand was surgery, but it's conscientious, you know, hurt tail, and they make that even more impactful, how about that, it's a good action for us. All right, with that being said, uh, is there a motion to, uh, select a proposal of the ones that I've been, sorry, I guess, a motion to present the recommendation, PPPR, okay, that's the number it is, um, as it stands, is it first by Chair Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Um, I am conformed with, yeah, absolutely. Uh, so, any discussion? First and second, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, this is a monetary spending day, so we have to go vocally, I assume, so I try not to shock you, we haven't heard. We have to be vocal, though, uh, because it's financial obligations, so, so absolutely. Uh, aye.
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 Aye. Aye, all in favor, Chair, aye, have it, motion carries, uh, a little more, I have.
Uh, yeah, I, I would recommend, well, probably, we didn't have much discussion on the board, it was probably table, and I mentioned that earlier, I'm gonna ask Carol, as the chair of that committee, to come present to the PPPR committee in March.
Absolutely, and it's discussion, absolutely, you can answer, but on that, while we're here, I believe, at this point, we have the full board, unless, I'm missing someone in my mind right now.
Which lady? Latonya, Latonya resigned. Uh, she, she took a job with the State Ethics Commission, and, uh, they said that, uh, she could not serve on any other public.
Interesting. She was a.
Which I know isn't the case, but I have a friend of mine, uh, Ox, is very, very politically probably for being on the expedition, and obviously, is that a.
So this is the full board right now?
Ex-主管 Latonya?
Need more people.
We can, that's, as soon as it goes. A motion to, I have a question, but, um, with that being said, I would say, so we need to make sure that someone, participating in the I committee at some point in time, Wednesdays, we do, they do it after one meeting a month, um, Wednesday is noon time at twelve, and we can participate by, assuming as long as the link is requested prior to, I'm not entirely sure which Wednesday.
The twenty-first.
Twenty-first, so the next one, so that would be, you reference the week from yesterday.
But no more than two of you should.
Yes, so let's say, so no more than two can be.
You could have ten.
I would say at least one, you know what I'm saying, like, it, kind of like we were doing the Friends of the Lib, are doing the Friends of the Library, I don't think that someone had it this last one, um, but make sure that at least one person, unless someone really wants to take that responsibility on, but they participate every single time, and that's what I was doing when we first started it, but I think it's good for participatory purposes to have, you know, a designated source fee for, for each month, um, I would like text you guys, maybe, but that's a little, so, um, it's a lot you wanna hear at this point in the meeting.
So with that, for scheduling purposes, you're okay?
Oh, okay.
For, for scheduling or, or arranging meetings, it's fine, but you can't discuss the actual business.
Sounds like me, that feels cool.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, maybe I will start a text thread purely for the purpose, uh, maybe I'm not accessible, or you may be. A communication will be sent out from some party or another to you individuals about when you're available to participate in that, and what people might buy, so, appreciate you all there, and not a person, but I just.
So where's it usually held at?
Here in this room.
The new?
Yes, it is, well, because let's say that the committee is primarily based upon employees.
It's been in the state.
It is, been in the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're correct, you're correct.
Oh, it's still in the.
Yeah, and it's still here in the library, I can't go. My contract would be that, can't even, um, what was, yeah, it's, the, the committee is primarily, is primarily comprised of, uh, staff per se, so it is a daytime, during the day situation, but, um, but like I said, we can participate by.
As much provided as just.
Jesus.
I'm sad, you gotta ask.
You know, if, if the finance committee chair came to the meeting, maybe one could consider, you know, consider a, a small, you know, lunch.
It's coming up, and we have to, we have to, so, so. Yeah, yeah, excellent.
Yeah, you're in charge of that section, so with that being said, we can move right down into the finance and privacy committee, Chair Jones.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, present the check registry of visitor report to everybody for the, I guess, who, and, uh.
Right, second.
I, I unfortunately was not able to attend, which we talked about in meetings, that the video are.
No, the check registry was so small.
It was, yeah.
We've got, we've got, we've got both December and January here, because you guys been in, in December, but the, the, or you guys been in January, but the full board didn't have, so we have two months for to talk to everybody, you guys, you guys approved in both, so.
So we just kind of forwarded that up.
So I make a recommendation to approve both check registers for December and January.
Second, there's a first and a second.
And I did not ask that question.
I, I think it's an original now for us, I'm.
No, it's true, it's true.
Uh, so let's, so first by Sophia, second by Chair Jones, um, any discussion, some discussions, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Oh, we have to vote individually.
Oh, yes, thank you, vote, vote, start down. Just wear your t-shirt, by the way, hey.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
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 I said it, I just said aye.
Oh, apologies, I know, of course.
Aye, aye.
Um, if you, if you, aye, have a motion carries.
All right, now, on the, uh, as far as the actuals, I think December was fine, I think, but what I would like to, I guess, present, the only thing that I seen that was kind of, well, two things now, you know, kind of, so I said one point five. The main one, though, uh, just talking to, um, City Library, was about how we can move around some extra funds that we over, I mean, I said over projected, but we projected our budget to be at a certain point, but we now, they have at about five hundred extra, and so, uh, there was a request to see if we can move those funds, we ought to take those funds somewhere else, so we want to kind of open it up to discussion, full board.
And, and we actually don't even have to move it, but you can use it, so it didn't get moved into the capital fund, but you can still, you can still, per, uh, our city budget officer, you, still your money, and you can still access it. So that's, uh, if you look at, uh, the, the, uh, December, uh, ledger report, the one that says, uh, FY two oh two three, prepared January third, uh, and you go to page three, that's our, that's our operating cash fund, uh, and that one is the unodded one.
Never went.
Yeah, we never, we never, this is unodded, but we never, we never went below five hundred thousand, uh, so that's money, that's how we pay our bills, it's out of that money. Um, and we've, that money has just been tied up and sitting there, but we can use that, and what we would have to do, if we use it, is go ahead and spend it, and we would have to come back and do a budget amendment at some point, typically mid fiscal year, so June, uh, that was the recommendation from, uh, Anthony Coolin, who was the city budget.
Assistant. Yeah. Wait, I got a little lost in the, do you know what we're expecting to do?
Well, so the, the, you guys moved two hundred thousand last year to the capital reserve fund, then you vote, then you voted to add another two hundred thousand, well, we didn't end up quite two hundred thousand over, and that hundred and forty-five thousand didn't get moved over, but we can still access it out of the operating cash fund. So that operating cash fund is money that is accessible, it would just require a, uh, a budget amendment probably sometime in June, or you could just amend, or you could amend it to move it to the capital fund, you just don't have to, it's just an extra.
I thought, I thought I heard something about, we were waiting for the city to send the committee.
No, it's, for years, we didn't, I didn't have a good explanation, uh, and, you know, I, yesterday was, I was critical, and I, not for, not for nothing, but I also want to emphasize that there has been, with this new, uh, financial administration in the city of Cater, there, there's more transparency, so it's kind of given me more to push back against in a sense, uh, because, uh, I was just in the dark, uh, for the first nine years on the job, on a lot of things, so I, my, I will hats off to, uh, to, uh, Ms. James, uh, the new CFO, for letting me look under the hood a little bit more, uh, but yes, I'm assured that that money is ours to use, so I see no reason for it to sit in a bank account, I mean, those are tax dollars, we're not trying to get a big bank account, we're supposed to use it for the library.
So are we, so is this like a, are we talking about where other funds should be placed at in this meeting?
Basically, what we're saying is that we want to leave the funds in our operating budget, because we're gonna be expecting some big expenses with furniture, and so instead of moving it into the capital fund and then moving it back, we can just leave it there and spend from, from our operating budget, but because we're spending it from our operating budget instead of from our capital fund, we're gonna have to amend our budget to just take it out of there.
So there, 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 area, does, does that account, is that still the same situation?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, it's just that this, this balance here, it can't get to zero, but anything above zero is the libraries to use, so it would just take a budgetary amendment to do so, so there's, I mean, that's an extra half a million dollars, right, right, so.
So, I mean, as, as we talked about it, and, I mean, as some people mentioned, I mean, we have a person, you know, that are coming up, so it's good to know we have a good five hundred, and it makes it easier for, I think it's more, it's more, I guess, of, uh, easier, cleaner exercise to come back and just write a limit and start shuffling around money, it's less click on bricks, exhale, file, and come start doing stuff.
Yeah, well, I'll, same to you, Larry, talking about another view, but I do want to put on focus radar that, um, the lovely ladies kind of the one fifty community, they want to start using winnings to reserve things and things, they want to bring it in like like outside, or require like deposits and things like that.
Yeah, we, we started on that, and I'm hoping that our, our outside funding bodies can also kick in on that, because that's what they're there for, so.
Especially when we talk about the.
Yeah, it's a, it's a. My head is, my head is burning with sadness.
That's still that blooming, that blooming, that.
And, and, so.
We need rent.
Just.
That's just discussion, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, any further discussion of the, uh, actuals, okay.
Uh, are there any proposals? I do believe this was one of the ones that we pushed up, and, uh, from Rick, from how Rick presented to it, it's, I think it's great, I think it's a great program, and a great system, um, it would allow us to, uh, kind of free up a lot, I mean, it's mainly for, I mean, so the, the, the beauty of it, and how it works, and how everybody better use it, the funny thing is, I think, you know, people will go crazy once they see how easy and beneficial it is, so, uh, I, the only thing I don't know is, like, the soft costs from behind the scenes, like how much extra we're gonna be spending in paper, you know, because I mean, it is a print situation.
It's possible, but this is, it's a cost recovery, so, I mean, we do charge those.
Uh, okay, yeah.
It shouldn't be, that shouldn't be an annual loss.
So this will, this will, in effect, just to kind of, from what I, how I look at it, this will turn us into a more user-friendly version of Kinko's or FedEx or Office Max where people go and kind of print stuff out, I mean, you get a lot of the advantages, or or Office Max where people go and kind of print stuff out. I mean, you get a lot of the advantages, or I'm, I'm sure you can do it with those places also, I just never heard of it, but you can print. At home, you can see something, you can just send it to your local library, in our case, a nice little DPL, it'll be waiting for you, and you just pay your money, I mean, you can probably stay in advance as well, and just come and pick your copies up. And so, uh, I, I, I think it's a good, it's a good, uh, service that the libraries would offer, and, uh, I would like to, let's see, we can present it to, I guess, get this passed and.
And is that, does that give me, um, is that like a? Is that, um, like a machine, you know, if you mention that, that you can come and pick it up?
Yes.
From a machine or from?
No, from, I think it's, it's going to the kiosk.
So, so there's a, there's a, there's a kiosk, a, a print kiosk, kind of pay, in a pay station to pick it up, but you can print from home and then come in, find your name on there, hump hop, and, and it's, and the, and the, it's like a big iPhone. And it's top, it's touchscreen, so it's pretty.
So that's nothing to do with how that break?
No. It's just like, at, at your office printer, when you just go up, so I know for us, we have a big huge printer, we go in, we scrape our badge, or put in our, our, our A numbers, and the job is waiting on you, so as soon as you, any of your questions?
There's also a spare cash machine.
Yeah, and, and, and it actually saves labor, I think you were hitting that, and, uh, and, and they, they love it, and we did, done all of their just.
Well, I make the motion that we accept the proposal for all today through this meeting.
First class of PS second by a lot. All right, or this option? No?
She's solo, solo vote for this?
Is this what I said we're gonna go?
Yeah.
Aye.
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 I pay the chairs, eyes have a motion carry.
All right, now, the next, I believe, is the discussion of the furniture, the new square. I'll defer to, uh, somebody who's here, I believe, so if he was here, so.
Well, we decided to table this, so we just, we can, I, I wrote the table at here at this meeting as well.
I agree, shout to Jordan, and, uh, he'll, we can have a talk about it tomorrow, uh, drawing up a, uh, an agreement.
Okay, so the motion is, anybody second, did they first or second the table here?
I seconded the table.
Okay.
That was the second. Who was the first?
Me.
Sophia first, so I'm the second in the session. Sign, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, most shame.
Last one is the security cost. Uh, this one was a little bit of a, of a, of a head scratcher, uh, with, with the, um, the extra cost, with the double, say, costs on the security costs, uh, from, from our discussion yesterday. Um, we, we were pleasantly surprised and shocked to know that we were footing the full bill for security costs due to the city backing out and, uh.
As of January one? As of January one, is that what I said?
Yeah, and I wasn't informed about it, I just saw the bill, but that's twice what we've been paying, and, uh, it turns out that the city, as, as Mr. Jones said, backed out of the, uh, going half with us. Uh, after much back and forth, uh, with the city, uh, the last email indicated, you know, they're willing to share some of it and work towards sharing and going half again next year. The, uh, the committee recommended that, uh, we get some kind of intergovernmental agreement, or at least a memory of the understanding saying, so even if we have to, you're, uh, uh, and that's another thing that Mr. Crown and I will be discussing tomorrow, our, our attorney, uh, on how to, how to go about that. Uh, and, and we may at best get thirty percent or so of this year, uh, so, but I'll, I'll see what I can do, if I can get better, I'll do better.
So I guess the action would be to approve A and four until we get that.
I, I think what you guys, uh, uh, approved last night was to direct me to continue to negotiate with the city, uh, and then work with, then work with, uh, Jordan to draw up an agreement.
Which I don't think we're, we're getting any actual action. That's why, that's why I was saying in the action.
So there's no action?
Yeah, that's. Okay.
I guess we just table the action, right?
And then I'll bring that to you once, once, I'll bring it to the committee next month, once it's, hopefully it's.
Hopefully it is, and it just may really, we may make some tougher decisions as it relates to security costs going forward, if they do not go well, um.
Cars are ready to leave.
Exactly, 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 but it depends on us.
So motion is off to table the action, for the seconds?
For the sake of such, motion table.
Second.
Any discretion, sign up, all in favor, so probably say aye.
Aye.
Can I, sorry, can the chair, I just have a motion table. Our nation, Rick Meyer.
No, no, I mean, that's not.
Did not think Meyer, it was not this one, so, uh, friends of the library.
Uh, February eighth meeting, they approved, uh, two requests, one was a, a continuation of, uh, of a, uh, longstanding program craft with Katie, uh, they, they're gonna fund that. And then the other one was funding, uh, artist, Michelle White, uh, the African-American instrument this month, uh, or this year, the theme of the arts, and, uh, Michelle White is a, is artist out of, uh, Springfield. She was gonna do a class, I think, she was gonna do a presentation in a class afterwards, a drawing class or something, and they voted to fund that. They tabled, uh, we asked them to fund our, uh, staff recognition committee, which is a little bit more than that, it's more of a, uh, staff, uh, morale, kind of, they, they voted to table that. I think they're, they're just, I think they're thinking about backing off that, thinking that that should be something that's self-funded. That's not unprecedented, they, it used to be whatever we did with self-funded and that, uh, and a few, and about ten years ago, when I started, they thought, well, just around the layoffs and everything, they were doing whatever they could to, you know, help staff morale, and, uh, I, I think they're going to cut what was asked for in that, but they tabled it, and they wanted a detailed budget from the staff recognition committee chair.
Can you cover it?
We'll have a lot to figure out, all right? Yeah, or just cut the cost, you know, or both.
It is, yeah. On that measure, like you said, the friends of the library meetings, a meeting that we wouldn't have someone at once a month, we set up a rotating schedule, which, uh, I don't have in front of me, it's going to play time.
I don't think we've gone this far, I think that.
We exhausted that, so the same communication about the, uh, committee will probably include abortion as well about the, uh, the friends of, the friends of the library meeting. That one's at four o'clock, um, and it's.
Second Thursday?
Yeah, so it's, it's an hour, it's thirty minutes. Start at four o'clock? Yeah, so it's thirty minutes prior to, no, we don't approach Thursday. Yeah, four o'clock, that's their study committee, second Thursday. Over the quarter back. Illinois Heartland Library System.
Yeah, the, I, I've talked to you guys about their proposed fee structure, well, uh, since, uh, since I wrote this agenda, the, uh, the vote has happened and the vote has passed. Uh, it is not as steep of an increase as was expected, but it's steep enough, I think it's, for us, it's roughly nineteen percent. Uh, they haven't, they haven't raised it in five years. Uh, I was one of fifteen libraries to vote against, uh, and, which baffles me because every time I talk to colleagues, they're like, what are we gonna do about this? We gotta stop this, and everybody voted for it, apparently, so, uh.
How do you stop it if everybody voted for it?
Exactly. So, uh, I, and, and I considered voting for it too, uh, but, you know, I, my thing was, I, let's vote against it, send it back to them and say, see if they're willing to make any cuts. And see what those cuts are, maybe we wouldn't pump those cuts, maybe we, you know, but, uh, there was no, there was no talk from share, and again, they are our database, essentially. Uh, it's a database for four hundred and seventy-four, I think, libraries now, uh, that's mostly what they do, and it's more than a database, it's an integrated library system, but, which, I was told by a software developer in, is that the, what conference room are we at? And, and, uh, they were launching a new, yeah, was it at the Illinois Library Association Conference, they were, uh, launching a new ILS, and I was told by the guy, he's a software developer, and he had done software for airlines, he said, this is the most complex software challenge I've ever had, is developing this. It's not, not, it's a very complicated thing, then you add, you know, four hundred and seventy-four clients sharing it, God knows how many users, uh, it's a, it's, it's, it's an expensive proposition. That said, I would have liked to have seen, what would they do if we said, I was, I would have liked to see that, but it didn't happen, so there we are. Uh, now, I, poking around, we would probably pay about five to six thousand, if we went on our own, about five or six thousand more a year. But have a lot more autonomy, but the, the original migration would cost us a good sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars. So.
Is that all one-time pay, or just?
Well, the first one is, the first one is, but then there'd be, yes, there'd be annual, annual fees of upwards of sixty thousand dollars. And we're, we're under sixty thousand dollars with, uh, share, just not a lot of it.
Okay.
But we, year, yearly, we pay for share.
Correct, and we would, we would for any ILS.
But if we went on our own, we would only have the initial season down.
No, well, that would be on top of our annual fees, yes, there's always an annual, there's always an annual fees for, uh, for that software, uh, and it's not, it's not cheap. And it also is not as user-friendly, uh, and would entail more labor because our, our staff would have to assist people in our, in our library loans, they would have to help them. Now you can get a lot of labor alone without any trouble at all, so. I, I'm not happy about it, but. It's, it's where it is.
Yeah, I have to leave, do you need to be very name before?
Emily.
No, we've got, we've got four without.
So, if you all have done.
Are you gonna make fun of her? She's wearing a coat.
Yours is look like you're.
She's also got dark green on.
That's her, we don't have mental.
Point's in my book.
What made fun of her coat?
But you do have A and backpacks, so I mean, you got some swag at some point.
Oh, I know.
It's not enough, we'll, we'll put it working. A and overwards, you listen, you used to come, you used to come.
Okay.
Anyway. Ooh, now, now, do open trustee, I, you know, there's an individual that has an application or such. So, uh, but it, not the same person we talked about previously, I don't, I think that individual's waiting until they start going to school, and you see what they're spending, and they're like, so hopefully that individual will be able to listen because obviously they have a strong admiration. For the library, um, nevertheless, a different individual has applied, so we'll actually, we'll report that.
I forgot about that.
Who's the other picture?
Our school, maybe, okay.
You're going to school?
Shocking.
Aren't you too old?
For what? To not go to school? Yeah, I'm too old to go to school. It's a life long.
Sorry.
That's a, one doesn't take over the environment.
So that's how I feel on campus.
Yeah, um.
So, wait, either, I, I, anything else, anything else to add to that, otherwise we'll, yeah, I'm just.
You saw old school.
You're fine, I'm kidding. Pay that for making fun of.
Right, approval of free day furniture.
Got it.
Yeah, so, uh, so last month, uh, you know, uh, we weren't able to make more, but we, we did, uh, uh, have Tiffany King here, and she showed us kind of, uh, materials and things that, uh, that, that's, you guys have already approved the budget for this. You'll have other chances to approve, this isn't the bid document, that's gonna come before you guys, it's not all gonna be bid, some of it's gonna be under the bid threshold, and there's only one vendor that can, can supply it. There are other things that will, there will be multiple vendors. So this is just a, uh, a, a, a basic blessing, uh, the vibe we got, I know Emily said she was amped, uh, when, uh, last month when Tiffany, our architect, showed us, but if you want to just kind of, uh, slowly scroll, scroll through there, you guys have, I don't know that you've seen it, uh, keep in mind that none of the fabrics are, all the fabrics are gonna be vinyl. Uh, even though they may not look vinyl, they, they are vinyl and cleanable, so, even if the photo isn't, even if the photo isn't, uh, vinyl, that's what we're gonna use one.
The colors won't be correct.
So really good, new, a new cert desk, new reference desk.
Who's gonna have our?
The desk, the, the security officers.
Is it gonna have any holograms?
Uh, I'll, we'll work on the holograms.
Visually, it's really making our carpet pop, so I'm hoping that translates to a light.
And it's gonna be an eclectic mix of furniture, some of the furniture's gonna be, uh, kinder to heavier people than the world currently have, uh, and, uh, older people. Some of it's more designed for.
Oh, look at that little cubby right there, that's a nice little cubby.
I know, those are nice. I like the ones on the, the side right there.
So it's designed to be attractive to teens, and our teen group, the meets here, looked at it and they were pretty excited about it. We got some booths.
I like those booths.
Uh, green.
I like it. I need to find that little.
I like that, that.
Couch.
What's the top or bottom?
Is that for the kids, the bottoms?
It was the airport furniture we thought it was, it was a loop, I'm trying to tell this place.
Here in the Bible.
I can totally see.
And again, none of these colors are red.
Lady throws VR goggles station.
And we're gonna, you know, they, and there's a gaming chair there for, this room, two rooms over here is gonna be, we're gonna turn to a gaming room.
So I mean, like real, like real gaming, you bring in your game system, or you're opening up?
We gotta, we gotta work on policy.
You're gonna host gaming?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have the system.
You gotta bring your host, bring your controller.
Is the blue the selected color, or is the chair?
They're not, those aren't necessarily the, the selected colors.
There's this.
There we go, there we go.
But you're gonna lose that chair.
I'm not losing it, I'm fine, so.
I will say, from previous discussions, that when it comes to the financial pickups, the boardroom table and the boardroom is gonna be the first thing on the shopping block.
Yeah, it, yeah, it could, but, but, but honestly, if you look at that extra, we've got the money, and we just, I just sent in an application for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant, now that ain't getting the grant.
Oh.
Keyword, not preference.
Is that the theater?
So then a little, like a little home extension.
This is kind of what the toddler age.
No, no, I have that on the list, yeah.
This is reference.
Oh.
I'm saying, you know that is a dying activity, right?
And that's where the theater is.
Little busy power ball, you say, yeah, that's it anymore. Teach them how, they should have been a hurricane wave station.
This is what my kids loved, they would read books and they would play, like Sundays at the library, one of them asked for my friends.
So it's a nice little skill stage.
Sundays with Sophia.
My friends, my friends Shannon, Ava, who could never take out books because they hadn't returned their books, would come with me, and my kids would take out like sixty books, all for them, and my friends would look at me and go.
You're the album.
Oh, no, I can't take out books this week.
Sundays with Sophia, DPL.
What a nice little sweater, look like, uh, what's his name, Mister Rogers, Mrs. Rogers?
So that's it, and, and we're basically asking a blessing to move forward.
I make a blessing.
We've already, but we've already budgeted the money, and you guys approved that back in October, uh, and we'll bring, again, we'll bring any bid documents, anything to you guys before they go out for a final approval.
I motion that we get them blessed.
Second. With the caveat of more dark greens, but.
No. I want navy blue.
And navy blue works, as long as it's. Dark, dark, cool colors, hair tones, sort of thing, you know, mixed back.
I think the kids need bright colors.
Well, where's the oranges and the browns at? You wanna do it like that?
I said, cool, cool colors. Brown. All right, so one, um, so there was first or second, any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying.
We bless you.
I, we've already been to finance, I didn't even hear this, do voice, we're good. I, can the chair, I just have a motion carries, uh, move down into, uh, line B, which is acquisition of art.
So actually, two things, uh, that you guys tabled a couple of months ago, so it's a, it's the, the, uh, private donation of what used to be the, from, in the first Presbyterian church. Uh, I, I, the vibe, last time we talked, was that probably weren't interested in this. Uh, I have talked to Heritage of the Heartland, they're, they understand if you guys don't want it, so. Uh, it's just not, where, what are we gonna, what are we gonna do with it, where are we gonna put it, uh, and do we, how are we gonna?
So honestly, it's, it's like original.
It is, it's, it's the original stained glass from the first Presbyterian, first Presbyterian church. Yeah, I can burn it some noise. If you can convince the, if you can convince the rest of them.
Yes. No. Now, what's wrong with this important?
It doesn't have the light to reflect through it, it's only great if you have sunlight passing through it. If not, it just looks like a, a, a geisha paint, that's really bad taste.
It's a community air look.
And, and as such, my recommendation is the Megan County Museum, is the. And as such, my recommendation is the Ming County Museum is the right choice.
Right, there you go.
And they had not, they had not approached them.
Well, I think they should approach them first.
Oh, oh, we're sure of the policy against collecting three-dimensional objects, only, only documents.
Otherwise you have a storage room.
We, we, and we have over the years, we stopped doing that about four or five years ago. It's behind you, and that is, they asked for that, we didn't know what the price was, and the artist told me he's asking two hundred dollars.
Two hundred? You gave the ghost a trophy? This is some.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's nice, I mean, it's kind of vintage looking, I, I'm a fan person myself, so. Two hundred dollars, two hundred, it's two hundred dollars, but.
I mean, I. I think that's what I'm saying, I think, you don't like that, but you like the, the mortuary pains, I mean.
Yes, it may be a male female's clue, she doesn't like it, I like it, she doesn't like it.
But I was saying, something we might, we might lose us.
The new direction is that we're.
So can you go with, with the old chairs?
So are we, are we voting?
I think I can. I like it.
Can we make a motion to buy it for Rick's office?
It's a motion that it's gonna be in the library in aerobic capacity, and it could end up, it would wait there.
Yeah, there you go.
Remember, I, I wanna make those, I, I, I said move, I said. Now, wait, no, so with the, with the, I, I'm amending the motion though, in that we are only purchasing two hundred dollars. Not the, the painted glass we wear. And graciously deny the acquisition of that art, but.
And that we will continue to look for.
Absolutely, that was a long, a long amendment, I'm sure Michelle got that down.
No, first we have to paint the wall, remove wallpaper, then we can talk about what goes on.
In addition to that amendment, that being said, is there a second?
Three piece amendment, right?
Sunday rate, Sunday rate. Second, this is second. Okay, there's a first, a second, any further discussion? Sign, all. It is financially, so we have to do a, until one's ruled. I started out at that side of the table.
Best of two hundred dollars.
No. I don't really wanna choose.
You, it's not the orders.
Wait, so then, go back, we can go back and do it then?
There's still three in class, so.
Yeah, if you, if you go over it, it gets.
Go ahead.
I'm just concerned about the other parts that we amended, because I'm only gonna know for one thing.
We're voting on this.
I think, because you should see the amendment. So this is the motion, you said no to? You said you know, I didn't hear you say anything.
How does it relate to that?
Yes.
Aye, aye. Aye. Okay, that was amended, so now we go, now we go on the motion as amended. That's a move.
Second.
Second.
Wait, why don't you vote again?
That was the, we ended, we ended up proofing it.
The purchase?
No, we approved the amendment to the.
Wait.
So we approved the amendment to, I amended.
No, I didn't, I totally approved the amendment, I just wasn't approving that.
Oh, sorry.
Approving the amendment?
So now this is the motion as amended.
So I don't think they, I think it's amended.
You want to purchase that?
No, the motion as amended.
So the first one you just took was to amend the motion to that we are, so that says we're not buying doors, we're buying painting, and we're gonna look at some other stuff in the future about potentially acquisitions in local art, I think is what we said.
So how do we vote on right now?
That.
I thought we already did.
Oh, that was the amendment to such, because if we would have voted yes, that means we would have bought the doors too.
No, no.
You said yes already?
You had to explain to me.
This is a new vote, so she's a no.
No.
Yes, aye, aye, abstain.
Red ball.
Wow, it's not like.
Didn't expect that one.
Do you like to change your vote?
So. Do you want the painting?
With the, with also your caveat that we're going to look in the future to acquisition of other arts from local art.
Okay, I'll be fair, so yes.
Aye. Motion carries.
Since we're looking for other art.
I have a C, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, meeting schedule as presented, is there any? Look at that carefully, because obviously yesterday we had a meeting on Valentine Day, it worked out, but if there's anything on there, it's gonna be problematic, folks. Obviously, this would be a good time to say it's a later.
I don't have a calendar, because I don't have my phone.
I'm the same way, I approach life in a day, well, a couple of days.
No, I mean, I normally look at the calendar and figure it out, but I, I don't, I don't have a calendar.
I'm not gonna look at my Bears and or Detroit games, I don't want to, so I don't, but that being said, aye, so.
Second.
Second.
I want Detroit to win the Super Bowl.
No, you didn't. I have something about, and then for.
You gotta, gotta get in it, gotta get in it.
I know, I wanted them to get in it.
Most teams lose.
One try, one try, anyway.
I made a motion to accept the board meeting schedule as is.
Absolutely, first, second, second, discussion? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can the chair, I have a, a series.
I shouldn't ask the question.
Well, we're in another discussion, I think that was.
Those, those are just the, the floor body meetings, the committee needs to get past the committee meetings.
Well, so it needs to pass, well, it's literally a paper. All right, any other discussion? I don't, I have anything that I.
Make a motion to the chairman?
Motion to the chairman, in the first, second, any discussion? I'm assuming not all in favor, three minutes five, would I say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, you could push the.
We need a term, five fifty-three.
Five fifty-three, now it is, DPL.